Okay, good evening, everybody. But before we begin, I'd like to welcome Reverend Calvin Odner with the Morning Star Chapel in Milton to lead us in our invocation.
Please bow your heads as we hear from the Lord's Word. The Lord is near to all who call upon Him, to all who call upon Him in truth, Psalm 145. Lord, we ask that you help us call upon you tonight and help us to see the truth, to see the need for your truth in this meeting. Help us to call upon our consciences as we apply the truths that we have learned from you. May the grace of the Lord Jesus Christ be with you all. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, November 17th, 2014, to order. Sudi, if you don't mind calling, roll, and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November 17th, 2014, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight, and I see the Smith family is represented well, so it's always good to have a school project. And I think you can tell, there probably wasn't anything on the agenda that was controversial or zoning tonight, because you picked kind of a quiet meeting, so. All right, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item is approval of meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 14, 303.
Okay. As far as the agenda, is there anything else the council or staff needs to consider? Do the staff, council, all right? I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Longoria, a second by Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir, not any general.
Okay, do we have any specific public comment?
No, we do not, sir.
I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. If you would, please call it as items.
First item is approval of the October 13th, 2014 work session meeting minutes. Agenda item number 14, 304. Next is approval of the October 20th, 2014 regularly scheduled council meeting minutes. This is Agenda Item Number 14, 305. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Edwards-Pitman Environmental, Inc., for Crabapple Environmental reevaluation. Agenda item number 14, 306. Our next item, approval of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with MARTA for the use of offset funds for the installation of sidewalks. Agenda item number 14, 307. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Martin-Robins Fence Company for guard rail replace or repair on Cogburn Road, Hamby Road, and Mountain Road. Agenda item number 14, 308. Next, approval of the acquisition of 0.024 acre of construction and maintenance easement at 12645 Crabapple Road from PWREO Crabapple LLC for a combined purchase price of $9,100. Agenda item number 14, 309. Our seventh consent agenda item this evening, approval of the acquisition of real estate requiring the relocation of mobile home sales office at Brangin Trail and Itasca Walk by the Providence Group LLC for a combined purchase price of $10,154. Agenda item number 14, 310. Next, approval of the acquisition of 958.11 square feet of construction and maintenance easement at Hopewell Road and Birmingham Road from Maria and Oswaldo Lozano for a combined purchase price of $1,648. Agenda item number 14, 311. Next, approval of the acquisition of 451.98 square feet of construction and maintenance easement at 15712 Hopewell Road from Margaret O'Connor and David Velutini for a combined purchase price of $4,511. Agenda item number 14, 312. Our next consent agenda item, approval of the audit engagement letter with Malden and Jenkins LLC to audit the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2014. Agenda item number 14, 313. Next, approval of the termination of a contract with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for intergov software. Agenda item number 14, 314. Our twelfth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of an amendment to the contract with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for in-code software to add the business license module. This is Agenda Item Number 14, 315.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Lask, a second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes unanimously. Okay, tonight, we don't have any items under reports and presentations, so let's move to our first presentation, Sudi.
Consideration of an ordinance reaffirming and establishing Chapter 46 of the Milton Code of Ordinances governing solid waste collection services within the City of Milton, providing for the scope and nature of the operation, providing for the disposal of garbage, solid waste, and refuse, requiring the execution by service providers of a non-exclusive agreement with the City of Milton, providing procedures for the handling of complaints, providing for an infrastructure maintenance fee, requiring indemnity insurance, providing for revocation and amendment, prohibiting assignment and subletting without consent, providing for forfeiture, and for making other provisions. This is Agenda Item Number 14, 316.
Okay, I have a motion, a second.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the first presentation as presented.
Second motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Lock. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items under a public hearing, so we can move on to our zoning agenda. Sudi, if you don't mind calling the item and reading the rules.
Okay, I'll waive the reading of the rules this evening, since we do not have any support or opposition for public comment. Our zoning item this evening is RZ 1414, consideration of an ordinance to amend Section 64-1596, special indoor/outdoor of the City of Milton, Georgia Code of Ordinances, to include provisions of Chapter 34, Article 3, Division 2, to streamline the existing regulation of special events and to limit sales from vehicles at special events, to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Agenda item number 14, 297. First presentation was at the November 3rd, 2014 city council meeting. This was discussed at the November 10th city council work session. Mr. Jason Wright.
Hello, thank you very much for your time today. Before you, you have the Special Events Code, which is moving into the zoning section, which is why it's before you in the zoning code process. Just a little bit of history, in September, the city manager asked the Communications Department, now Innovation and Engagement, to take over the permitting of special events. So we took the process, kind of beat it up, and talked with everybody that it touched, and essentially established sort of a concierge service through Angela Thompson. As part of that process, we discovered that the code language for a lot of special events was in Parks and Recreation, only they hadn't been involved in special events for about two years at that point. So the thought was just to simplify it, move all code into the same section, which happened to be in the zoning section. So that's what you have before you. I'll entertain any questions, if anybody has some.
You know, we have any questions on that? Jason? Bill?
Jason, down in Article 3H, I think it refers, well, it says, "Sales from vehicles are prohibited unless approved for the special event by the special event coordinator for the City of Milton." Sales from vehicles, I would assume that includes food trucks.
Yes, that was one of the interesting kind of wrinkles that we discovered. In our code section, food trucks are actually illegal, according to what was in the zoning code, or the special events code. So what we did was, we simply said, clearly, any food truck that's gonna come to a special event that requires a permit, we're gonna need to know about, and, you know, they'll have to have everything that they need for food trucks. I mean, you can't just pull up a, you know, truck and start selling hot dogs and hamburgers out of the back of it anymore. So that's really the aim of that section, is to simply contemplate food trucks, and that, you know, for most special events, they tell us what food trucks are gonna be there, and we can say yea or nay.
Refresh my memory now, did we not pass revision to an ordinance to allow for food trucks in the city?
Yes, this is simply, you know, fixing a wrinkle in the code.
Right, I understand.
Yeah. Because there's also, there's also other kinds of sales that could be made from trucks, you know, like I know at Crabapple Fest, there was a, you know, they pull up a trailer and they sell light-up swords and, you know, little noise makers and things like that. So like, we would allow that. What we're trying to keep away is, you know, someone bringing a trailer and just setting it up on the side of the road without any permits, selling clothes or selling saddles, you know, any number of things like that.
Contraband.
Yeah.
Article 6.
Yes, sir.
Prefers to performance bonds.
Yes.
Would you explain that whole article? Please.
So essentially, what this is for is that, now, are you asking about the message of the special event, or the content of the speech?
Well, I think I understand what they're getting at with a performance bond. Apparently, it's gonna be issued for 150% of the anticipated cost of the event, which is going to allow, some city managers here, if I ought to restate my question.
Yes, yes.
Perhaps that's more in his, maybe what. Ken, we're on the special event ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Down in Article 6, on performance bond. Okay, and I understand the first part of it, it's 150% bond to cover the cost, I believe, incurred by the city to provide police coverage, emergency services, whatever other costs that may come up, maybe some ultimate cleanup cost or something like that. But if that's not right, is that your interpretation?
Catching up with you right now.
Article 6, subsection A.
If you can go on to the, I'll be looking, Councilmember Lask, and get that answer for you.
Okay, in the, about the third sentence, it says, "For purposes of calculating total estimated costs and the actual cost of the special event, no consideration shall be given to the cost of providing security or traffic control." So if the bond is, for the purpose of the bond is to cover emergency services, including police, which I assume is, they're participating in traffic control, and the other emergency services, like the fire department, EMS, what's, I don't understand that, that part
Okay, would that be regular, you know, not including regular police protection or public safety that possibly would be typical versus additional or higher public safety for the event? Maybe that'd be the separation there?
Well, they further go on in another article there, to say, "You must use, City of Milton, emergency services, police, and fire at some determined cost."
Well, to the extent that you're asking about the performance bond and the, are we talking about the fact that it does not anticipate that the cost of security or traffic control is part of the bond costs? Is that the concern?
I guess I need an explanation of that sentence.
It's a constitutional concern. Here's the, here's the thought. There is case law that suggests that if you set a monetary bond that is in any way tethered to the need for security, then what can occur is that unpopular speech that may engender a lot of disruption, things that are unpopular may generate a lot of need for security, right? Well, the court's concern is, is if you therefore base a permitting fee requirement on just the fact that their speech is unpopular, it will detrimentally impact those sorts of organizations. Does that make sense? Even if you don't agree with it, I'm saying that's what the law suggests, which is why we were trying to make sure that we didn't set a fee or a bond requirement that was based upon whether or not the speech was popular.
Yeah. Okay, then, I guess he continues from there. Furthermore, no consideration may be given to the relationship of the applicant, nor to any assumption or predictions as to the amount of hostility which may be aroused in the public by the content of speech or message conveyed as part of the special event.
Just reemphasizing the point, that's correct. We are trying to make sure, whenever you assess a fee that is needed for people to gather, you've got to make special accommodation to a reviewing court, because candidly, we're drafting this for a court to review, to make sure that Milton understood that in no event can we base this fee based upon the hostility or the adverse reaction of those assembled. That was the whole point of doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And then, and speaking, going further, I mean, in Councilmember Lask, I know that you are a student of some of these points. If you need us to provide some case law authority for that, or you just wanna see the rationale, we'd be happy to provide it to you.
That'd be, that'd be neat, if you could.
Not sure what kind of delay we're in on, Granikis, but I can tell you, I was watching the meeting in my office, getting a couple of things done, and I heard your question about the, related to the law enforcement or security. Did that question get answered sufficiently?
Mm-hmm.
It did, okay, all right.
Okay, Karen?
I just have a quick question. 3A, it says, "No more than two special event permits shall be granted per year, and no permit should be affected for more than 14 consecutive days for a single event on the same property." Does that mean that a husband could get two special event permits, a wife could get two special event permits, a organization then could get two special events? How, who is it, it can only have two per year?
It would be tied to the property itself. So that if you, if you wanted to have more than the two special events on the same piece of property, you would need to then get a use permit, for example, if, so that you're not running a special event facility by circumventing the law. So a single event on the same property.
Okay.
So it doesn't really matter who applies for it, it's tied.
As long as it's on the same property.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Joe?
Go ahead.
So, so some places are well-suited for special events, and I'd like to think that the city has an abundance of those places, which we may very well. But if one place is like more popular than the other, like, let's say, the common parking space is for, you know, shopping center or something like that, and that's just the place where people like to have these kinds of things, you're saying that we would limit it to two per year?
Well, I can tell you from historical data that we've never had to use that, because really, I think what you're looking at there is, they wouldn't necessarily need a special event permit, because it's not going to adversely affect the use of the property. In fact, some would argue it, you know, it increases the use of the property for everyone there, and it's not gonna affect like the traffic around it, or anything like that. There's, yeah, there's all sorts of events that people have, you know, we're actually in kind of a unique situation, where we have houses, homes big enough with property large enough to have some, what in other cities would be some pretty massive events, but no one would ever know, because they have tons of space for parking, no neighbors ever complained about the sound. So this just contemplates if you have to come and get a special event because you want to shut down a road, because you want to, you know, use the property in a different way than it's previously been, so.
Bill? Let me bring this up further, the question then. We approved Little River Farm here a while back. Would this preclude them from having more than two special events in a year?
No.
So they have an event that supports North Fulton charities, one, and the next one they're supporting K-9 assistance, something like that. Would that preclude them from having other events then or not?
No, it wouldn't, and the reason it wouldn't is because you granted upon them a special use permit as a rural event facility, and that, so you've granted upon them the ability to perform a function on that property that wouldn't travel within the special event code. You've allowed them to be an event facility, and you've given them the parameters, if you remember, by the days of the week and the hours of the day, that they could operate in certain capacities, so.
Should we, should we include clarification to provide for that provision in this ordinance then?
Do we need a clarification that would suggest a special use permit could travel outside of this code as a matter of law?
I don't think we need one.
I think that's okay.
I think, yeah, I think we're okay on that.
Okay.
Karen?
I'm a little bit confused, because I thought anytime you had more than 100 people at your house, you were supposed to have a, get a special event permit. Ken, I mean, I thought that was just kind of, I mean, this may be going back four or five years, but I thought we had discussed the fact that anytime you had more than 100 people, that you had to have a special event permit for it, so, regardless of whether or not your neighbors were in support or not.
Admittedly, my brain's been the first thing to go, but I don't, I don't recall there ever being a requirement for, that there was a number of person threshold, I could be, I could be very wrong, I just need some help.
We discussed that at one time, and it was 100 people, do you?
I remember, I think it had to do with a tree farm up on Wood Road.
I think it did too. And they were having a big church retreat or something there, that was.
You put me in proximity of time that I could, I mean, that would take me a little bit of days to.
Is that something we could research?
Yeah, that's not right at the top of my head.
Get back on.
I know, I know of the tree farm, and I know of where it is to know.
Well, you know what, this, no, this was dealing with the barn that was being used for a church use group, is what it was dealing with.
Oh, that was on Red Road, if I don't, if I remember.
That was in the Stony Brook Farm subdivision.
Stony Brook. Sunny Brook.
Sunny Brook Farm, Stony subdivision.
Okay, I do remember the, now I can tell you, I remember the context, but I'd have to do some research to get to that.
But that's, but that was because of the number of kids attending, we told them they had to get a special use permit, so we need to make sure that we're not in conflict with this ordinance.
Ken, with that.
Right, I, okay, so the fact that you were saying special use permit, now I'm gonna do it, and I'm gonna, but I'm gonna qualify by saying, I'm thinking out loud, that's dangerous to do. But I remember that discussion to the point that it was functioning as a religious facility in the fact that it was, in the fact that it was a young life group, if I remember correctly. And I believe the interpretation from our attorney's office at that point was because of the, because it was functioning almost as an extension of a church, and because a church is something that is permitted by the Milton Council in the form of a use permit, that this secondary location, because of the type of use that was being conducted there, was one that would require a use permit.
But we specifically discussed the fact they would have to get a use permit if they were gonna, we need to go back and look at that.
And that's what I'm suggesting, why I think that there was a use permit required in that case, was because it was, because of the condition of it being an extension of a religious facility, which is allowed by use permit in Milton, that.
Yeah, I would have, that sounds right, I would have to go take a look at it as well, and just pull our analysis, I'm sure we issued Sidi the opinion on it.
Make sure you're consistent.
Absolutely.
Well, we may have to discuss that.
Well, yeah, but I mean, when I think of special use permit, though, I think of, that is a product of typically your zoning ordinance, whereas this is a special event permit, I just, I think those are different concepts, at least in my head. I mean, when you talk about special use permit, those are concepts that, once they're adopted, they run with the land, they're typically undertaken by way of a public hearing process, et cetera, whereas, you know, to me, I view this differently. I mean, this, to me, is more of an accommodation for a one-off sort of event that may involve city infrastructure or city streets, but it's not anything that is of permanent duration. That, to me, is one of the big.
Yeah, we could clear that up by not calling a special use permit a permit. It's special use zoning.
Right.
Anyway.
The permit makes, leaves some.
Right, the permanent, the permit sounds like a permit.
Right, that's right.
We would have like, you know, because a permit has a connotation that it could be revoked.
Right.
Which we all know that's difficult to revoke a special use permit.
Right, that's true. I didn't create the term, let me just go ahead and tell you, it's well-established in Georgia law.
I tripped over that one about six times last time, so.
Ken, if we, do you feel comfortable that we act on this today, or do we need to put it off until you?
Oh, no, I don't think, I think at the end of the day, you're not gonna find any overlap between analysis pertaining to a special use permit, as sloppy as that language may be, and a, the special event permit. I think they're totally different concepts, and I'm very comfortable that you could take action, as long as, as long as the council's comfortable, but from a legal perspective, I.
Well, I'm interested in making a motion.
We'll open up the floor unless somebody else has got a question, or?
I'd like to make a motion to approve RZ 1414, Agenda Item 14297. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sure, anyone opposed? If that passes, unanimous.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, Sudi, if you'll please call the next item.
Next item, under unfinished business, consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapters 46 Solid Waste, Article 2 Littering, Section 46-24, to require construction site operators to properly dispose of building materials and waste at a construction site that may cause adverse impacts to water quality. Agenda item number 14298. First presentation was at the November 3rd regular city council meeting. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you. I don't know that I have much more to add than what the title says it is. It's very simply, in addition to our solid waste ordinance, that allows us to control construction sites a little bit better. It's mandated under our NPDS permit that we include this, and so. It's mandated under our N, NPDS permit that we include this, um, and so we have brought it forward to comply with our permit, and that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Okay, Bill? Well, Carter, aren't, aren't these issues covered by EPD? Several of them anyways.
A lot of what we do is covered by EPD.
Right.
Unfortunately, in this case, they wanted some specific language added to our ordinance to, to handle it, so we're trying to comply with their request.
Oh, they request?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
They've mandated it as part of our permit, that this language be included in our solid waste ordinance.
I got you. And I noticed they, uh, named one of the pollutants as a thing.
It's our catch-all.
Okay, anybody else see any questions, comments? All right, I'll open that up for motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number fourteen two nine eight.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Coontz, second by Councilmember Thurman for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, city, let's move on to new business. Please sound the item.
This item is consideration of a resolution adopting the two thousand fifteen City of Milton City Council regular meeting and work session schedule. Agenda item number fourteen three one seven. Tonight, we are asking for the mayor and council's consideration of a resolution which will approve the schedule two thousand fifteen council regular meetings and work sessions. And before you, you have an oversized calendar showing the thirty-six upcoming council meetings for two thousand fifteen. The blue highlighting indicates the regular council meetings, and the red highlighting indicates a work session. In two thousand fifteen, there are three regular city council meeting dates which do fall on a Wednesday due to holidays being on a Monday, which are Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, and Labor Day. In preparing the two thousand fifteen calendar, the following dates were taken into consideration: the city's eleven observed holidays, which are highlighted in green on the calendar, and the Mayor's Day Conference in January, and the GMA Conference in June. Our first regularly scheduled meeting in two thousand fifteen will be on Monday, January fifth, and if this calendar is approved by you this evening, it will be on the website for our citizens, so we respectfully ask for your approval of the council. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, anybody, Karen, any question?
So, the GMA conference has moved back a week this year, it's the fourth weekend?
It is June twenty-sixth through the thirtieth.
I'll get to go, I didn't think I was gonna get to go.
Somebody else in the calendar?
Nope.
All right, I'll open up for a motion.
This mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, uh, approve of agenda item number one four dash three one seven, consideration of a resolution adopting the two thousand fifteen City of Milton City Council regular meeting and work session schedule.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion, uh, for approval from Councilmember Morick, second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, city, if you'll call item number two.
Our next item is consideration of a waiver regarding joint representation of the City of Milton and Milton Public Building and Facilities Authority related to revenue bond. Agenda item number fourteen three one eight, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Okay, now I can call you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and not members of the authority. This is the reciprocal waiver with respect to my providing joint representation of both the Milton Public Building and Facilities Authority and the city council with respect to the current revenue bond that you have in front of you for consideration this evening. I will be representing both entities in that transaction, but do respectfully request that you waive any conflict of interest based upon that representation.
Okay, any questions for?
Can on that?
To represent us, coming and going?
And all your many hats.
Okay, I'll, uh, open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve a waiver regarding joint representation of the City of Milton and Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority related to revenue bond, agenda item number fourteen dash three one eight.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Longoria for approval, with seconded by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, city, you'll, uh, call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a supplemental resolution authorizing the execution, delivery, and performance of an intergovernmental contract relating to the City of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority Revenue Bond Series two thousand fourteen. Agenda item number fourteen three one nine, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, you heard at the, uh, earlier Public Facilities Authority meeting, Mr. Roger Murray speak with respect to this resolution, would ask that, uh, he approach the podium again, and if the council has any questions for Mr. Murray that were not answered, uh, the first time, uh, the council considered, considered this resolution, you could ask them at that time.
Okay, you have any questions for Roger? Done a good job. No questions.
Actually, you all approved the, uh, execution of the intergovernmental contract earlier, I think it was in June, um, but Ken and I thought it would be prudent to come back and have you approve the contract again now that the final interest rate was set, so.
All right, any other questions on that? We'll, uh, open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, um, to approve a supplemental resolution authorizing the execution, delivery, and performance of an intergovernmental contract relating to the City of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority Revenue Bond Series two thousand fourteen, agenda item number one four three one nine.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Coontz with a second, and Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, city, uh, you'll call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a home office payment agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, the City of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority, and Ameris Bank. Agenda item number fourteen three two zero, Mr. Ken Gerard.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is also an item that was previously discussed in the earlier Public Building and Facilities Authority meeting. Mr. Murray is here to answer any additional questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Any payment options, okay? We'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion to approve agenda item fourteen three two zero.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Thurman for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. City, if you'll call the, uh, next item, I'm sorry.
Next item is consideration of a waiver of conflict regarding Gerard and Davis LLP's representation of the City of Milton in connection with an IGA between the City of Milton and Forsyth County regarding the extension of county water and sewer services into certain parts of the City of Milton. This is agenda item number fourteen three two one, Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, just my night, uh, for these sorts of waivers, I appreciate your indulgence in letting me explain them. This, this pertains to a transaction, uh, in the north part of Milton for a small parcel that, uh, Mr. Howard Carson has approached both the City of Milton and Forsyth County, and requested to, uh, maintain the densities with respect to the parcel at whatever they would be with respect to, I believe, septic, but has nonetheless requested that they be provided or sewered by the Forsyth County Sewer Plant called the Manor Plant that is in Forsyth County. Um, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I, you know, as I do represent Forsyth County, and I do represent the City of Milton, I'm approaching requesting a waiver because this will require an intergovernmental agreement for Forsyth County to basically have permission to provide additional sewer service within Milton. I would not approach either jurisdiction if I believe there was gonna be any sort of conflict or acrimony between the two governments. However, I know that the City of Milton is very protective with respect to sewer, I know that, and I know that Forsyth County is very respectful of the City of Milton's position on this. This is a very, very limited, um, introduction of additional sewer within the northern portion of Milton for this singular subdivision only. I see no conflict, uh, with respect to this transaction, and so I'm comfortable coming for, uh, for you today. I will also report to you that Forsyth County has already considered this and has, uh, approved it.
Do you have any questions for Ken, comments, Rick?
So, Ken, this is just a re, a request to let you represent, this is not approval of this.
That, that is correct, and in fact, what the next product, if this is approved, you will see is that we will work in earnest with Mr. Carson, uh, to perfect the intergovernmental agreement, and then we'll bring that to you. That's, that's the actual meat and potatoes of when this will take place.
Thank you.
But per your, and you mentioned, you don't foresee any conf, and I say conflict because the interests of both the City of Milton and Forsyth County, you can represent without.
That's correct.
I mean, obviously, if there is a conflict, you'll step out and-
That's correct. Yeah, I would never, I would, yeah, please.
It was my understanding that the access to the subdivision is actually from Forsyth County, so it really makes sense for Forsyth County to be the one servicing it, but the intent of this is not to increase density in, in any way, it's just to have the whole subdivision serviced by one government, correct?
That's, that's exactly my understanding, everything you just said.
But again, just so I understand, we're not approving that portion tonight, we're just approving representation of you working on the intergovernment, governmental agreement.
That's correct, and, and again, if I brought you an intergovernmental agreement and I began to see that there was a divergence with respect to what Forsyth County wanted or Milton wanted, I would get out at that point.
Mayor and council, if you'd like me as well, I can just tell you that I've also been engaged in this particular discussion from the, uh, staff side, that the Milton staff side, I'm not terribly convinced that any agreement will ever come forward in this particular case based upon some, um, some struggles that we're working through right now as to who actually provides not only the sewer but the water to that particular area, and, um, you know, there's potentially a player at the table that we haven't included yet, and that's Fulton County, um, because they, yes, yes, they do provide sewer in Fulton County, but they also provide water, and I don't know that to the extent that they're willing to give up water customers to allow Forsyth to sewer a piece of property in Milton, I don't know that we're not gonna receive some fairly strenuous objection from Fulton County, so, um, you know, the, the legal representation in this particular case is one of it, but it's, it's a long way from even coming forward in a, in the form of an intergovernmental agreement for the council to consider, but we, we put this waiver in place early on, at least we can be mindful of the fact that, uh, the conflict might exist. I'll watch for it if I think that it does exist, but, uh, to even further hone in on your question, no, this is, you're, you're not doing anything with respect to- That's what I wanna make sure. To the sewer movement anywhere, I mean, because we're, we're not even, we don't even have all the questions answered yet. Okay.
Just a point of information, how much property is involved in this? I recall seeing the report before.
Councilmember Lusk, I do not have the acreage off the top of my head.
It didn't appear to be a vast tract of land.
I don't remember it being sizable at all.
I am probably wrong. That disclaimer, for some reason, I remember twenty-three acres.
So, it's not like Fulton County's gonna be deprived of a huge, uh, revenue.
No, it's not, um, but it's probably more the, it's more of a principle thing than it is anything as to, you know, what, what door opens and then which one closes, and they've capitalized a water system and they want customers to offset that, that, I mean, that's the way that their finance model works, so, well, you know, it, it, it'll be whatever it is, once we get to the, and as we get to the important discussions.
Bring on the next case. Okay, anything else? All right, I'll open up, uh, for a motion on this waiver.
Mayor, I move that we approve a, all right, let me just put my glasses back on so I can read it right, a waiver of conflict regarding Gerard and Davis LLP's representation of the City of Milton in connection with an IGA between the City of Milton and Forsyth County regarding the extension of county water and sewer services into certain parts of the City of Milton. Agenda item number fourteen dash three two one, second.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria with a, uh, second from Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, city, if you'll call the next item.
Next item is consideration of lead certification for the new city hall facility, agenda item number fourteen three twenty-two. I do have a public comment card on that item.
Okay.
And that would be Mr. Jack Linden.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jack Linden, I live at fourteen eight ten East Bluff Road in Milton. Um, I just have a couple of brief comments about the issue of lead certification for the new, uh, city hall. When I read that this was on the agenda, first thing I thought about was the issue that came up about two months ago, I believe, about the, uh, the ball, new ball fields at Bill Memorial Park, and how we were being, the city was being asked by, by Jim Craig to increase the budget for that by, I think it was three hundred thousand dollars, to put in artificial turf on one of the fields, and the justification was that this was gonna save the city significant money over the course, over the, over the lifetime of those fields, and, uh, you, you approved that motion, and I personally thought that was a really good idea. The lead certification, I think, is a similar sort of thing. It's gonna cost some money to do this, but it'll save money in the long run. Um, I have a report here that was put together by the U.S. Building, uh, Green Building Council in, uh, two thousand and twelve, and it's titled, "The Building Case for Green, Built, The Business Case for Green Building," and it's a lengthy report with lots of references and that sort of thing, but there's a couple of points out of it that I'd like to make. They, they claim that the operating costs for new construction for government and businesses built to lead standards decrease by an average of thirteen point six percent, and that's a yearly decrease for the life of the building. The payback, then, if they calculated it to be about eight years for the, for the extra costs for the leads, uh, construction approaches that are used. Uh, one of the interesting things I thought from this report was, they claim that the annual utility costs per employee in those, those buildings was six hundred and seventy-five dollars less than the average employee cost for same types of buildings without, not done to the lead standards. So, I, again, just, I, I'd like you to seriously consider the idea that even though it is gonna cost some more money for building to the lead standards, it's actually gonna save the city considerable money in the long run. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay? City, if you've, you've got the next item, so-
Ready for me?
Ready for Mr. Carter Lucas?
So, back in two thousand and twelve, as part of our sustainable practices policies that, uh, we adopted, one of the components of that stated that, uh, for any new buildings that we built or owned that were over five thousand square feet, we were to, uh, follow the lead practices, uh, and actually be lead certified. Uh, the caveat to that was that in the event that, that certification cost more than twenty-five thousand dollars, it required us to come forward and get council approval to move forward with that. So, as we're moving through our negotiations with the architectural component and developing the scope for that, uh, we're bringing that forward tonight to see if that's a component that you wanted to include, uh, in our design component, in our design contract with the architect. At this point, what I can tell you is that the estimated cost for the administrative and commissioning components of the lead certification will be a little bit over fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Fifty-eight?
Yes, sir. So, that does not include any of the construction costs associated with the building to meet the lead standards. What we have done in the past, uh, on these facilities, though, is that we have followed the standards, uh, to the extent that we can, and we've done all of the energy modeling and lifecycle costing, uh, and evaluations as if it were going to be a lead certified building, but we have not moved forward with the commissioning, and we have not done some of the administrative things that were required on behalf of, uh, the lead certification to get the plaque itself. So, where we have followed those, uh, practices, um, in principle, we have not followed them to get the certification. And so, we're here tonight to ask whether or not you want to expend the funds to go ahead and get the certification, or follow our standard process that we've done in the past.
Okay, we'll open up now.
So, to make sure I understand right, if we do everything right, then we're paying fifty-eight thousand dollars for a plaque?
That's right. It's very pretty, it's glass.
What is it, and is there a benefit for lead certification?
What other benefits would that be in actual certified versus not, but doing, doing everything physically the same? What is your opinion on that?
Well, my opinion is that, uh, that money is probably better spent on the facility itself than trying to achieve those goals within the- than trying to achieve those goals within the facility rather than the administrative costs to those. So when we look at that $58,000, you know, a little over $23,000 is for commissioning the building. In other words, for a commissioning agent to come in and make sure all the facilities are up and running and like they're supposed to be. We have a city architect on staff that's got a lot of experience in that. We would direct our architect and their engineers to help us through that process, too. So we would be doing that process as if we were going through the LEED certification. We just wouldn't have a commissioning agent involved in that. The administrative and paperwork associated with it is another $23,000. And that's probably one thing that we wouldn't necessarily do, other than just through our normal course of business and evaluating each of the practices that we would be looking at to make sure that they are cost benefit to the city, and we're not just chasing points to get points. We do look at the lifecycle costs and where we can choose some things that have a better return long term rather than just upfront costs. We have leaned towards selecting those types of things. So we are really kind of going through the process. We're just not paying the administrative cost to actually get the certifications at the end.
So Matt was right. It's $58,000 for a plaque.
Bill?
All due res-
I'll nod.
All due respect to Mr. Linden, Milton grows green. I think you just read my playbooks, sir. We're on our third LEED project right now. I couldn't agree with you more. Particularly at this stage in the process of building a new city hall, start spending money of that magnitude, but knowing full well that you have to make that decision early on in the project. So much of this process involves documenting everything that you do out there, where you're securing materials from, and who's doing the work, and on and on and to edenite them, really. I think we can better spend our money on this building in other ways. I think the important parts of this process is, of course, conforming to the Georgia Energy Code, building with sustainable products, which we can do whether we're going for certification or not, then commissioning and maintaining our systems afterwards. And that's where the savings are, is selecting the right equipment, then continuing to maintain the equipment and the systems as you go forward as we're using the facility. So it's, I would, I promote, you know, following the process. But I don't think it's worth our while to spend that amount of money just chasing points and making sure that we're within, you know, two miles of public transportation, or we've got park benches, you know, surrounding the building and stuff like that. I did bring a LEED score sheet, which I'll pass around. It doesn't go into detail as to how you reach or secure these points, but it gives you an idea of what the whole process involves. But I think most of these architects or design firms now are just in tune with the process of following the LEED process in securing materials and systems like that. But to spend $58,000 for, to address Matt's point, a glass plaque out in the lobby, I'm not sure that's prudent use of our money. I think also what we could do, and what I would suggest, is maybe at the end of the road, have the architect write a narrative as to the systems that we used and hit on the sustainability aspects of the design process. And maybe we could publish that and put it in our lobby in lieu of putting a glass plaque out there.
We can certainly do that.
Joe?
Yeah, so I'm just going to play devil's advocate here for a second, because I would agree. I wouldn't sit here and try to argue that $58,000 for just a plaque is a worthy expenditure of, you know, city funds or our taxpayer dollars. But at the same time, I know that there's other things that are related to this, and it's not all just about getting a plaque. There's a lot of other things. The certification process itself is a proof point, because we can claim things, but if we don't have proof, then are we sure that they were done to that specification? Well, you will know, because you will be overseeing the project, and you'll make sure that those things are being followed on. But I guess my question is, is this an opportunity for the city to provide a certain type or level of leadership in, you know, in the state, in our community, whatever? I mean, it boils down to this question of is the concept of LEEDs worthy of our attention? Is it worthy of us spending what I think would be a, and not that it's, you know, a money thing all the time, but it's a very small percentage of the overall budget to build this building. And so I, again, like I said, I'm not sitting here trying to say that this is a good use of money, because there's still too many unknowns to be, you know, discovered in terms of the project. But, you know, it's one of those things, once the building's finished, you can't go back and have it done. So I would just, I would say, you know, is this the decision we need to make today? Is it something that we need to just, you know, think about and, you know, really consider what other impacts this could have on, you know, just our position in the community and our statement to those around us about what we're all about?
I had the same, was going to ask the same, or close to the same question. You know, granted, it is money spent, and I certainly understand you can build the same thing without the name brand and have the same exact end result product. But are there things in the future that we may be foregoing, or are there any incentives or credits that down the road? Because if we're not certified, then we may be passing up. And I don't know the answer to that, but kind of throwing that out. Is that something that could come back later, you know, years down the road, that would be an incentive that would save money?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head either. I'm sure there could be things down the road that would come up. And it really is probably a question that every community wrestles with, and what is the value in having the actual LEED certification? You know, for some communities, it's important. For others, it's important to be fiscally sound and be able to utilize that money to the best they can on the facility. And it just depends. And so that's why we have it in this policy, that we wanted to bring it forward for y'all to make a decision. Once we get to this kind of dollar figure on those types of facilities, whether or not it is something we want to move forward with. So we are here tonight to ask that question. Do we need to make a decision tonight? No. We can move forward as we do, as we are with the current contract with the architect. And if we decided later date, not too far down the road, that we want to continue to pursue the LEED certification, we can make an amendment to that contract and bring it forward.
Per?
Well, I think when we talked about the policy to begin with, there was a debate about, you know, chasing the LEED certification as well. And I'm of opinions on this end of the table. We can do all the practices and processes and save the true commissioning, I think. I'll just hold the rest of my comments to myself.
You know, I would, you know, I would agree. I mean, the private side or the practical side of me says, you know, obviously, we can spend, do the same things. But again, that was the only thing I wanted to ask the question or, you know, see if we wanted to explore more of that. Two years from now, three years, would there be an incentive that all of a sudden, well, gosh, since we're not, even though you got the same building, we're not certified, that we have to pass up on some kind of, you know, break on something or credit or something? So that's all I don't, and as Carter said, he doesn't know that, and I don't either. You know, I don't know if Bill does or anybody else.
I don't know how you can anticipate that at this point in time. I don't think it's possible to anticipate what effect or impact it's going to have down the road. I repeat myself, I think many of these, most design firms in the business now are designing to conform with these policies and procedures in the LEED process. So I think we can promote ourselves even being a leader in this process. But I don't think that the value of enhanced leadership is worth $58,000. I couldn't justify it.
Karen?
How much, I know we've got a cost here that we'd have to pay an outside person of the $58,000. Is there a difference in the amount of staff time it would take to actually do what we really ought to do and make sure we do have an energy efficient building as opposed to actually filling out the paperwork and working with it? Or is it all, would all the additional time be the outside consultant's time?
I think all the additional time would be mostly the outside consultant's time. From a staff perspective, I mean, we're going to push these sustainable practices, whether or not we're doing LEED certification or not. So most of it's going to be administrative and outside consultant time.
Phil?
Take exception to that. To a point, a lot of the costs are, significant amount of that cost is borne by the contractor. The contractor also has to do the documentation
Well, that's right.
in that process, too. So this $58,000 is not the total nut for that effort.
That's right.
There's a buried cost in the construction cost to administer it.
And I guess that's what I was asking, is the $58,000 the total cost difference? Or is there some additional cost that would be incurred just to pursue the certification other than, rather than just doing the right thing?
The $58,000 is only the administrative costs on the design side. Does not include any of the construction costs or the construction admin costs from the contractor's side.
Joe? Joe?
So I'm not in construction. I build things, but I build software things. So it's, you know, I don't have any history in terms of LEED certification itself, other than what I've learned being on the city council. But is the actual cost tied to the budget of the building? Or is it the same no matter what kind of building you're putting up? In other words, would a $1 billion super tower in New York cost the same to get it LEED certified as the, you know, building that we're putting up?
Oh, no. It would be more for a more expensive building.
So there's some variable cost that's based on the construction that's going on?
Size of the project.
Yeah. Is there any kind of benefit, material benefit from a, like insurance point of view? Can we apply for discounted insurance, whether it's fire insurance or whatever insurance might cover the facility that's based on LEED certification that we couldn't get otherwise? I'm trying to come up with a, how on the earth do people that spend millions of dollars for LEED certification justify it?
Yeah, what are the benefits? And I had the same thing. I said, are there any insurance policy savings, something like that, that there would be a benefit? We're saying it's just a plaque. I guess the question is, from an outside world looking in, what are the benefits? Why would you even want to do this? Why wouldn't everybody just design without getting certified?
Well, I don't know if there are insurance credits or not that would be available to us if we had a LEED certified building. But I think you hit the nail on the head earlier. Going through the process justifies and certifies that you did, in fact, do these practices that led to a sustainable building. I'm sure there are communities that would probably claim that they did without actually doing them. That's really not our way of doing business, but I'm sure there are. And so having the LEED certification is really a justification that you did go through the process. And it's important to some communities. Having these facilities as an example to the rest of the development community, especially if they're asking the development community to do the same thing, is important to some. The dollars are important to others, and I think we just have to decide where we are on that. For us, the development of the building and following the form-based code and establishing really the look and feel of the Crab Apple area has probably been one of the most important components from a staff perspective, knowing that we would be looking at these sustainable practices as we go through, but not necessarily focusing on the certification.
So one last question. Is the cost associated with the certification process a cost that is just charged to us by the person who's going to underwrite the certification? Or is it, does it go to the LEEDs organization somewhere in some tower, and there's no way you can get certified without paying them that money? In other words, if we had a resource in the city who was willing to donate their time and energy to do this part of the process, is it possible that we could get it done without paying for it?
No, I think.
Okay, all right.
If I follow that, no. And part of that is, if you look at the breakdown on the $58,775, $2750, $2,750 is for the review fees from the building council, and $900 of that is for the registration fees to the building council. The remainder is the commissioning and the administration fees, just to get us there, to get the paperwork done and to be able to submit for it.
All right. And the reality is, you know, we can build the same exact building, certified or not. But, you know, again, that's, and, you know, I totally am on board with, you know, let's explore the same options. You know, there may be certain things that if it's LEED certified that you'd have to spend money on that don't make sense to do. But there are probably some, there's a lot of things that make sense to do it. But the only question is, you know, is, I think Rick used the, Rick or Joe used the instance of insurance, you know, I don't necessarily know. But, you know, there may be something later that pops up. But, you know, hey, it may not be worth $58,000 that we spent on the front end, you know? Matt?
Yeah, and just on that note, I mean, I've seen the housing sector with a company called Southface that had a certain criteria for homes that were constructed a certain way that were energy efficient, and that was primarily used for marketing of the homes for resale of that. In this particular case with our city hall, I don't see the resale of a building more as I could see of any benefit of the certification being a promotion of LEED certification. I don't think that promotion of LEED makes the City of Milton better. I'd be just as happy with the Milton grows greens department giving a stamp of approval for the marketing of our new city hall. And I think that would be just as great marketing as it was anybody else's. Much so is that that would be touting our own residents as much as anybody else. So, you know, I think I would be for doing it to those standards or better. A lot of times, you have these programs, and they have their standards, but the technology can change, and we might consider that, too. So rather than us being tied in to something, this gives us flexibility to be the best that we can possibly be, as well as involve our citizens. And it just makes more sense to me to not do it.
Phil?
I'm beating a dead horse here. And it's come back a couple of times. Is that the total cost? And it's not. Some of it's buried in the construction cost. Just to give you one example, you get points for your construction waste, sheet rock and metal studs and any types of metal and masonry. You get points for providing separate dumpsters for each different material. So you're segregating all of your waste. But obviously, there's a labor cost involved in smaller equipment and material costs. So that's the cost you don't see. It's buried in your construction costs. So it's, there are a lot of buried costs, a lot of hidden costs in this. There are, on the other side, there are benefits. There could be some energy savings over the course of several years. Quality of life, quality of, you know, air quality in the building could be a factor. But like I said before, and say again, current design standards in firms pretty much conform to this whole process.
Okay.
That's almost it.
Per, you can make a motion.
And I believe it would be, from what I've heard-
And I believe it would be, from what I'm hearing from everybody, to deny the consideration for lead certification for the new city hall facility, agenda item 14322.
I'll say.
Chris? Hold on. Chris, you want to-
Just quickly, I think what we're really just looking for is direction. So rather than approval or a denial, Ken, what I'm really just looking for is the council to say, either move forward, you know, working towards lead certification or move forward in a sustainable practice that doesn't necessarily result in that at the end. I don't know that I want to necessarily have a negative motion though.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I don't want a denial. I'm really just looking for direction. Maybe I don't even need a vote, Ken. Can you?
I don't think you need a formal vote on that. I mean, I think this council's pretty good at giving sort of a consensus direction with respect to these sort of informal things, and I think that's, do you feel like you have enough at this point?
I'm looking to Carter.
I'm reading the direction that, that the majority council, that the council, we are not, not looking to spend the money for the actual lead certification, but want to explore all practices and physical practices of a lead certification on the building, to at least explore all of them to make sure, you know, to make, build the most efficient building that we can. Is that-
That's the consensus I'm taking away from the council.
Okay.
That's what I've written down here, is I think that's what y'all have said.
And I guess, again, I'm coming back to, from a leadership standpoint, I understand the financial, we don't want to, do we want to spend this money? I guess what I don't know, I'm not, I'm not fully on board with understanding, okay, why would you even want to do, what are the benefits? Are there benefits we're not seeing that we'd want to do from an environmental standpoint? So if we say, okay, right now we don't want to pursue this, does this preclude us? Because we haven't started building yet. We're going to try to build it in with the architect. Later on, could we make the decision if we say, you know what, you come back to us, hey, there are some benefits. We've looked at insurance, we've looked at whatever. Or we could say, yes, let's go forward on the certification.
You know, I'll take a stab at that, Rick. You know, we would still, design-wise, the architect would look at all the-
Right, I understand.
We'd have the options of doing all the, all the things that we're talking, that you're talking about. So, I don't know.
We've got one lead silver building in Milton. If you want to go walk around one and see if you can tell the difference just by walking through it, and that's the Kohl's Shopping Center over, right around the corner.
I've walked through a lot of buildings, and I've walked through a lot of lead certified buildings. I've yet to be able to tell the difference, other than the plaque going into the building.
Well, yeah. I mean, obviously-
Yeah, but lead is about a lot more than what you see on the surface. It's really-
You see the, you know, in a hotel inn to go, you see sustainable practices.
And efficiencies and whatnot. But again, we can still design and build a building that will be just as efficient and sustainable.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I liken it to, it's a little different, but in the business world, when you get into like Six Sigma and different disciplines where you have gone through the discipline and you can state, we did in fact do it. That's the only thing I see that may be a benefit. But I'm wondering if there are other benefits.
Well, we can look to some of those. I mean, I liken that to the statement that I would make to you if we were talking about accrediting our police department, for example. I mean, there's benefits that come with that accreditation that offset liability exposure to the city. So there's a direct, if you do this and invest this money, this is the offset and liability that comes along with that investment of dollars. So I understand the question. We can, we certainly have the expertise and access to the expertise to see if there's anything that we haven't brought to you tonight.
And my only challenge is, if this only costs us a dollar, I don't think we'd be at the discussion. We'd be saying, get lead certified. So the real issue then is, we just think we've crossed the line. I have no idea what the line is, but-
$25,000.
Twenty, apparently. Oh, yeah, right. By our own decision.
Okay. Alright, I think you've got direction.
Okay, I do, yes, thank you.
Okay. I'll move on. Anyone on the council have anything they want to report on?
I'll just congratulate Milton High School on their playoff win. It's a big deal. So.
Okay. Alright, I know.
I have moved to the standing position. That must mean my list is long this morning, or this evening. Gosh, feels like this morning. Let me touch on some just housekeeping things first, and then I want to dive into a couple of more in-depth issues. I want to remind you that this week is the Thanksgiving lunch at the senior center on Thursday, between 11:30 and 1:30. So, is it 11, it's either 11:30, 1:30, or 11 and 1:00. But if you're there in that lunchtime area, you'll be able to eat with the seniors, still at the church on Francis Road. So that's this Thursday. I also would like to let you know that unless there's strong objection amongst the council, and I know only a couple have attended, a couple of them, I really need to postpone our 11:30 tomorrow, the book discussion on For the Love of Cities. Carter and Stacy and I have three different places we're trying to divide and conquer, and we just simply can't be in all three places at the same time. So unless there's objection, I'd like to move that till after Thanksgiving. Okay, the first topic of, well, and let me also tidy up the fact that I wasn't with you a week ago tonight, because I was, had the opportunity to go look at our new public safety radio system and how it's functioning. I can tell you that we will be very impressed with its capability and the safety. Once we get it deployed in Milton, we will be safer that very same day, and so will our first responders. So good news there. Let me talk about this handout that I think you got. This is the Highway 9. Did you hand out the Highway 9, Carter? Is that what you handed it up?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, if you want to, can you hand this picture? This would be a photograph of, orient you on our site that we own on Highway 9. This picture that's going to come to you is from the north looking south. Our site would be on the right. We have three trees that are on that site, I believe, three large pines. There is, I've got it identified here as to-
20s and 24s.
There are three pines, and the recompense value of those trees, if we were to have to take them out, or say somebody else was taking them out and they couldn't replace the trees on site, the recompense value would be $7,200. I was approached by the billboard company that we settled the billboard litigation with, who has moved forward with the permits necessary to place a billboard at the Sweet Apple, or Sweetland, Sweet Apple, where those playsets are, just south of that location, same side of the road. They're negotiating with that parcel, which was one of the approved parcels in our settlement agreement. And that's where they want to put one, and they want to, they wanted me to bring back to the council to see that if our future development plans contemplated those pine trees being removed, which we, under the current plan that we have, if we were to build that plan with a public safety complex, they would be. The billboard company would like to work with an agreement, with the council on an agreement that would allow them at their sole expense to remove those, to remove those now, instead of waiting until 2019. I also, in talking with them, said, but I can't just take to the council the fact that you want to take three trees down that we may or may not have to take down. I said, you know, if we had to take those down and recompense for them, if we couldn't put those trees on the site, those trees would be valued at $7,200. They have made an offer of the removal at their sole, removal and cleanup at their sole expense, and if we allow them to move forward now, they would be willing to recompense to the city $5,000 for those three trees. If they want, if we would want them to wait until we actually start to build on the site in 2019, they would recompense the whole $7,200. The question becomes as to if, for some reason, we decide between now and 2019 that we no longer want that front edge, that we want, that we just need the back part of the site, or if we don't want that site at all and decide to separate from it, that if we don't move forward with saying that we would want some type of recompense now, the agreement that they would want to write would say that then that recompense, the $5,000 or $7,200 would go away if we didn't develop on that property in 2019. That was their first initial offer on a, almost a negotiation that you had no idea I was having. And that's why I'm bringing it to you at this point, to see kind of what your thoughts are. It's not a decision that I feel comfortable that I can just authorize without bringing it to the council, because it contemplates the receiving of money in exchange for the removal of some trees, and I really look kind of for your direction there. Having said that, Carter, is if I framed it kind of correctly, that's really what we need at this point. If you want the trees just to stay in their current state till 2019, they totally can. And we don't even have to be, we don't even have to be worried with this. If we think they're going to come out sooner or later, we could save ourselves some cost by allowing them to come down now and pay into a tree recompense fund. So, kind of looking for your direction.
Bert? You're not going to see any savings in cost, whether we've got those three trees there in 2019 or not, so I'd say we leave them there.
I agree.
You know, you're not going to have a cheaper clearing line item on your budget for that.
A tornado will take them down in the meantime.
Okay.
Okay, good. That's the direction I need.
Black agreement.
Agreed.
Okay.
Clear on that. Alright, let's keep talking trees while we're talking trees. This is not necessarily, well, I don't know if that was a good story. If that wasn't a good story, this one's going to be worse, unfortunately. I'll frame that one for you. This is going to deal with a couple of trees that are located on our site at the Broadwell Pavilion. If I could orient you to that site, they're off, over off of Broadwell Road. There's one large 36-inch white oak at the front of the site, it's in very good health. There are two trees that are at the back of the site. One's a 48-inch post oak, and one is a 58-inch post oak. The 58's the one that has dual trunks, so you probably, if you've been out there and looked at the trees, it's the larger of the two. We had those trees inspected, and we have an arborist, certified arborist, report that unfortunately, the largest of the trees, the tree that is at 58 inches, that post oak, has root decay at 38%. When root decay becomes larger than 30%, the tree becomes a potential hazard, and the recommendation is that we either not put anything underneath it or it be removed. The unfortunate part about this is the playset was the thing that was supposed to go under this tree, and the pavilion is also sort of under this tree. So it's with, the unfortunate, I guess, delivery that I've got to tell you tonight is that I believe that for the safety of that park, we need to act upon the reliable information that we have and remove that tree. I believe the 41-inch oak, although it has root decay as well, its root decay is at 21%, which is less than the 30%, which doesn't put it into the category that we've received from the arborist. And there are some things that we can do to increase its survivability rate and try to strengthen it. Even though, admittedly, if you go look at the two trees, it looks to be the most in danger at this point. Technically, its roots are the best. You know, for $1,000 and some fertilizing injections, et cetera, et cetera. With the arborist, we believe we can bring that tree to a level of health that it could stay and remain. I have a very difficult time when I get an actual report that comes from an arborist that says that this tree is at risk of falling, and there's nothing you can do to it at this point to reverse that. I have a difficult time building a structure underneath that more, or even putting a playset underneath it. So it's unfortunate, but I guess I bring that to you more as a, as an update. I think we have to. I wish that it, I wish that we didn't. But if anybody would like to read that report, we're happy to share it. But I just bring that as a, as an update.
We can replace, I mean, obviously, you're not going to have anything, replace it with something else, obviously, if we take it down. Right?
Yeah, we would, we would replace with things on the site, to the extent we could. You know, it's unfortunate that it's the largest one. But in doing the, it's also important that we did enough due diligence to know that we're not placing the public, and we're asking the public to come mingle underneath something that could place the veteran's.
Right.
Okay. Do you need money?
Sounds responsible.
Is there something we can do with the wood of that tree once it's taken down?
Yeah.
That could be used as something-
You know, we're going to be a lot of power for that fireplace.
You know, it's funny that you mentioned that, because we had just that discussion earlier today as to what we could do to not just, you know, my first reaction was, how could we just make this thing disappear in the middle of the night? No sound, and, you know, because it pains me to say that there's a big tree out there that is to a point that we need to take it down. But we could, you know, to the mayor's point, I hate to say, you know, hardwood of a tree that size is quite valuable and quite expensive, and we are building, I know that was kind of a joke, but we are building a wood burning fireplace at that park for the community's enjoyment. I guess, you know, to the extent that it's hardwood, that once it would be cut, that we would recognize that it was decent on the inside. You know, there's other, I guess, milling options we could, you all, a couple of you that build probably know better than I what we could do with hardwood like that, but-
And we did talk to Davy Tree, Davy Tree about some of the salvage value of the tree, and they thought it was probably minimal because of the condition of the tree and the knots, and it just wasn't very clean wood, so.
Is it hollow? Did they go in that way?
I didn't, we didn't go in that way. We were looking mostly at the root structure when we were doing the testing.
But the tree itself may be solid going on.
It could be. It could be. And it wasn't necessarily the survivability of the tree that they were concerned with, it was the structural stability of the tree.
Now, I would like to see us try to, to look at alternatives where we could use the tree for something.
Perhaps we could mill some of it and put some trim in our lobby of the hotel, of the-
City Hall?
City Hall, or something like that.
We get lead points for it.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, at least that brings you up-
Let it go, let it go.
We'll look at that. I just wanted you all to be up to speed that, you know, your phone will ring just as quick as mine does.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's the most important thing, is we need to make sure that, you know, everybody realizes that and get the proper communication that, you know, it was a safety issue, you know, for public space, so.
And the good news is, is the report that we have that, you know, it'll be a matter of public record, and we're happy to share with anybody that this wasn't an arbitrary decision to simply remove a tree because we needed space. This was because people who are experts in this said that the tree had a risk of falling over.
Right.
Okay. Two last things. I want to talk just briefly about transfer development rights. I'm going to talk about this tonight because, and I'm going to start with the end in mind. And the end is that I'm kind of looking for a little bit of guidance. And I'm looking for a little bit of guidance, I think that'll make sense here in just a second. But as you know, we have been talking about transfer development rights for some time now, at least over the last couple of months. And there is a public bid that we have released from the city that would contemplate the option for people to bid on development rights that we own at Bell Memorial Park. There's also been some direction of the council that said, you know, we really think that the program would be better if the first transaction, or subsequent transactions even, would happen with a private seller to a private buyer in that sort of marketplace. We've worked with a couple of sellers, and the one that we're working with probably the closest right now is Jim Bell on Birmingham Road. We've learned a couple of things. And the couple of things that we've learned is, is like putting a big puzzle together. You learn more every day. The piece of the puzzle that we learned today is that the 10 acres that is conserved as a cemetery likely does not have any development rights to sell from it. There is actual easement that the secretary of state would have to consent to a conservation easement if that 10 acres was going to be used. What that does is it leaves, on Mr. Bell's property, leaves 3-point something acres, 3.12, enough, that what this current developer we have coming in would need to be able to move forward with the project that they want to bring forward on Highway 9. Having said that, the code is pretty clear. And the code is clear that it says that in the AG1 area that there has to be a five-acre minimum. This is where I start to look for a little bit of direction. And the reason I look for a little bit of direction is because I have a transaction that I believe certainly travels with the code. And that is the transaction that we've brought forward with, at Bell Memorial Park, to offer up the development rights that exist for public bid. If I look at the code that the council's adopted and the ordinance that I have to work under, that one is clean. It doesn't require any variances. It allows us to move forward in a very systematic way, and would bring back before the council a proposal or recommendation that we in fact engage in this business decision with this particular developer to receive dollars for those transfer, for those development rights that we could, at your discretion and your direction, use to buy other public lands. We also believe now that the code allows for either a variance or potentially an administrative warrant to the five-acre requirement to allow either the director of community development or the border zoning appeals to allow that five acres to come down to whatever number they feel that number should come down to. As the city manager trying to interpret the code and interpret the policy direction of the council, the one thing I'm cautious of, very honestly, is that we went through a very public process with very professional consultants and a very professional staff to land upon an ordinance that after good thought and thorough discussion resulted in a five-acre minimum in AG1. And that thorough discussion was because we wanted to make sure that we conserved lands in larger tracks than in just these little thumbprints at a time, you know? So that was the whole thought process behind the five acres. It's a little bit difficult, when you're sitting in my shoes, to look at a transaction that I have that will follow completely along with the code, to then look to a different style of a transaction, to say, the council gave us an ordinance, we went through a whole process, it said five acres, the very first one we're going to bring to the council suggests that we vary the very standard that we created as a part of the ordinance, saying, you know, if you, if we pick five acres for a reason, the very first transaction I bring before you, I'd say, well, it meets all the criteria, but it doesn't meet the five acres. Having said that, this isn't one of those times where I'm saying, council, I need a vote, council, I need, I need you to take a firm position. vote, council, I need, I need you to take a firm position, but I would like your feedback, so that we can make a good staff decision based upon your policy direction, that if you say, Chris, rely upon the code, we gave you the code for a reason, and that's what you're to use to make your decision, then I'm going to bring forward a transaction to you in the future that will wholly be responsive to the code without the requirement for a variance or for a warrant. But if you say, Chris, you know, yes, we gave you a code, but upon further recollection and upon the feel of the community as a whole, we believe that even though we've done that, we feel that it is far sur, is far more attractive to use the private sector in a lesser acreage than five acres, I believe I can accomplish that, too. Recognizing now, and I should put this out there, recognizing that that landowner has to be willing to do all the things that get us to where the 3.1 is viable. I mean, I can control our ability to be ready with our, with our parkland. I can't control Mr. Bell, but I can control the code that he doesn't necessarily comply with today, in the spirit and the intent of what that code, which was to preserve green space, by making a rational, a rational argument that the 3.1 acres, while it's attached to an additional 10, what the public is going to see is going to be 13 acres, you know, I could make the, I can make the rationale get there, but I guess I'm looking to the council to, because candidly, the council has been very diverse, in their opinion, as to how we should do this first transaction. I've got a host of different opinions that I've heard from individual members of the council as to what this first transaction should be. I'm kind of at the rubber hits the road place, though, because we really have got a couple of different options, and I'd like to, I don't want to bring two options back to you if I know that one is just a nonstarter, so... Have you said all that? Let me summarize and say, I'm really kind of just looking for, Chris, look to the code and let that be your guide, or, Chris, we really think that the community is looking and hoping for something other than a strict interpretation of the code. That would be advice to me as well, so that I can make a good decision.
Let me ask you this, in that direction, that's not necessarily proving that, but it's allowing you to look at, bring that back as an option.
That's right. That's right. Because right now, the one that, the one option that we seem to have that's most viable with the private sector simply doesn't meet the minimum acreage that the code requires. So, if you're saying, Chris, be open-minded to that, that, that kind of gives me some idea as to what the council's thinking. Or if you just say, Chris, rely upon the code, then, then I can, then, that helps me because I can make a phone call tomorrow to say, you know, I appreciate your interest, I just can't make it work.
Okay. Well, Bill and Karen, and then that.
Last time we talked about this issue, when was it, last week, I guess, work session? We were kicking around different options, just so we could kickstart this whole process. And I think at that time, we were talking about, one of the options was to provide some monetary incentives to start this whole process. I think the, at least what I picked up on the consensus, was that it should probably come out of the private sector rather than out of the public sector. I would be in favor of, as an incentive, of coming up with a variance to that ordinance, just to get it kickstarted, advertise it as, to the fact that this is an incentive for the public to get involved in this process, and hopefully, it'll generate some other interest out there, so...
Okay.
My take on it.
Karen? Personally, I don't like us having a variance of that degree to an ordinance the very first time the ordinance is used. I mean, if this was 4.8 acres, I would say that's a no-brainer. But going from five to really three, that's a huge variance, and that, to me, is going against what our intent of it was, just so we can avoid the first transaction being with city property, when the proceeds from the city property would be going, it would only be used to conserve other land in the future, and I might actually give us some money to use for incentives for other projects. I just have a hard time, you know, it seems like we're just, we're trying to find a way, any way we can to get this to work without using the one city property, and we're almost running scared rather than doing what, to me, is the logical thing to do, which is go ahead and do it with the city property, set the standard, and use those funds to, as incentives for other pieces of property.
Okay. Fair enough, I understand.
Rick?
Okay. And I guess, and Chris, I think I've been clear, probably in my notes to you. I step back, and I understand what Karen's saying, but I look at the spirit of the law that was put in place. We wanted to preserve, we didn't want a parcel of half acre, one acre, so it was a, put it in place, let's do five acres. This, and then we spent a lot of time saying, how do we get public interest, where we get the private, the private sector actually participating? Here's an opportunity, the way I see it, yes, it's a variance, but it's, it would be termed as a variance. And why I see it as, as an acceptable use, is it is going to be contiguous with the 10 acres, so it's not like a standalone parcel, 3.1 acres or 3.12 acres. I see this as really, what the public's going to see is a long expanse of preserved property, which is what we're trying to do with conservation. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I don't have the heartburn saying, oh, this is a variance to the ordinance. I look at the spirit of the ordinance. We want to try to do conservation. So, to me, we spend a lot of time in our work sessions saying, how do we kickstart this thing? How do we generate? I think we go against generating private interest. If we, in fact, do a public, just to meet the ordinance, to say, let's go with five acres, that's what our ordinance is, so we're going to do the parkland. That's my concern in saying, don't do the variance. I think we should do the variance, like Bill said, because I think it helps us start the process and go the direction we need to go.
Okay. I too kind of feel Rick's way. I think that our intent of the original ordinance was, was to, where you didn't have two acres here and this on the other, and if this was not attached or contiguous to a larger parcel, I might not feel that way, but I feel comfortable at least further exploring that, this option.
Okay, great, thank you.
Joe?
Yeah. I don't think there was anything accidental about that ordinance, the way it came together, the components of the ordinance itself or anything. We put a lot of energy, effort, and thought into every bit of that, and I think the five acre concept was something that was purposely put in there. And I'm with Karen, that I think that, right off the bat, if we second-guess that, it's like we didn't, we're pretending like we didn't put all that work into that thing. And not that I don't think that either one of these options will result in us, everybody getting what they want, I think there's a good chance that that could happen. I think there's some risk with reducing the five acre minimum in a piece of property that has apparently quite a bit of questions surrounding it, in terms of, what is it? How can it be used? You know, a lot of things. I mean, we think it's going to be a cemetery today, I don't know what it could be tomorrow, and if the only thing that comes out of it is a TDR purchased from it, and it, and it's not, you know, of sufficient size in the property itself, all of a sudden, we've just got this little piece carved out of the middle or something, I'm not sure. So, I would rather us stick to our guns and interpret the ordinance the way it was written.
Okay. All right.
Yes, I'm the last.
No, you're not.
Oh, no.
You're the next to the last.
Well, the next last, nobody else spoke.
No, I haven't.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
God, I haven't.
You're right.
Joe counts.
Joe does count, he counts pretty much.
I mean, not, depending on what match perspective it is, it may not matter.
I mean, you know, five acres or three acres land is being conserved, any way you look at it. You know, I think that was a spirit of over-intending. If the landowner wants to use a TDR in this process for as few acres of what he's available, I'm okay with that, even if it's a small piece within a greater area, we don't really know what it might be, whether it be a cemetery or something else, that land would still be conserved. So, I am, I am for it.
I think you have a direction, Karen, or maybe odd man out here, but it sounds like...
Can I ask one question?
Sure, sure.
The 3.1 acres, does that already have a house on it, or is that 3.1 acres of property that's totally undeveloped?
I believe it's non-constrained, which would mean that it's undeveloped.
So, his house is, that's on the property...
Am I correct in that, Kathy? Yes, I'm correct in that.
Would be, would be different from the land that's set aside.
That's correct.
So, you're really, I guess, keeping two houses at best, probably.
And again, but it does sound like the, the direction is to explore that option, and the council will consider that option, as are other options.
Okay. Let me, let me tell you, the reason I bring this up is because, I mean, obviously, now this was good, because I think we all can see that this, I've been trying to figure out this direction for the last couple of weeks, recognizing that I've had very different opinions, depending on who I talk to. One of the things that we really have to do to make all of this stuff work is we have to focus the land trust in, on doing their background data that they need to do, to focus them in on what parcels potentially we're asking them to hold the easement on. But there's also costs that go along with that. There's an investment that has to be made with the land trust before they even launch to do their background data. So, I, I'm not going to put words in anybody's mouth, but I'm going to say that I think I have enough direction tonight that I can work with staff in the morning to put together a plan. I understand that there's still, again, there's still things we still can't control for, that we might have, I might have heard tonight, that at least I think the council's willing to consider a reduction in the five acre requirement. That would be totally contingent upon some factors that we have absolutely no, no control over. So, I'll keep you up to date, moving up to speed, as we, as we move through this, but is there any questions I can take?
Bert's got a question. If, if it's a private transaction, and we have no incentive policy in place now, I would assume that any cost associated with that transaction would be borne upon the two parties, the buyer and seller of those rights.
That's correct. That's correct. And the other part of the equation that we still haven't gotten to yet is whether, is what the agreed-upon purchase price is.
But that's, that's...
That's not our problem either.
I mean, there's a lot of water that's got to cross under the bridge before it's this is final.
Correct. There's a lot of, there's a lot of game to play in 30 days, and maybe longer, I mean, all I can do is, that was a big step tonight, very honestly, for me to get at least a little bit of direction as to what's an option to the council, and now that lets me do what I need to do to be able to bring the next step to you.
And bottom line, that's, you know, the direction here is just for Chris to bring, or the staff to bring back the options, and that is one option that could be considered, but to Chris's point, that doesn't necessarily, you can lead a horse to water, you can't make him drink, it may not, that property owner may not fit the...
That's true.
You know, it may not work for him. Rick, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a, kind of a clarification and maybe a question, because you've been looking at this a little bit more closely. We've heard, we don't know what this is going to be, the cemetery is going to be developed. From my understanding, that can't be developed, based upon the way it is deeded today. They were looking at, could they get a conservation easement to go over top of it, but I don't think that can ever be developed the way Mr. Bell got it set up originally. It will become, that property will be preserved. Whether you call it a cemetery or you put a conservation easement over it, is that correct?
You know, that, I'm going to go out on a limb here, and I can tell you that basically what the deed, the warranty deed for that, for those 10 acres, it, it says, the property described here in being a total of 10 acres dedicated to cemetery use shall not be sold, conveyed, leased, mortgaged, or encumbered, except, except, as provided by the prior written approval of the Secretary of State, as provided in the Georgia Cemetery and Funeral Services Act of 2000. So, there's an act out there, this is probably very similar to the telecommunications act...
I was just reading it yesterday.
You know, so, I, I don't know what the requirements of that act are, because I just received that, you know, in the last couple of hours, and Ken probably doesn't, because I haven't given him an opportunity to weigh in on it either, but I would venture to say that there are some pretty strenuous legal requirements in the act, Ken, right? That, I mean, I've just got to think there are.
Well, without having reviewed the act, I can tell you this, if you've got a property that's encumbered with graves on it...
Which they already have.
Then, then there's already a couple of things, there's already implied easements that encumber the property with respect to, for instance, the ability of individuals that are relatives of those folks to come on the property. I mean, it basically renders a piece of property undevelop, undevelopable.
Well, I think if, just hearing what you said about not having any transfer of development rights, kind of says to me that it can't be developed, or at least that's the current, but maybe that's a clarification, when you find out what, what does that little nuance potentially allow?
You know, anytime, and I can potentially answer that, and I'm not trying to be the city attorney tonight, but anytime I read the word "except," that always leads me to believe that there was something compliment, there was something contemplated in the law that would cause you to be able to do something in violation of what was in the phrase right before it. So, you know, I guess we would want to know what those exceptions are, otherwise, there would be no reason for the word "except," it would just tell you, you couldn't do anything. So, we'll try to answer that. But my gut, a very strong gut reaction is, is that you're right, there is no, it is, it is undevelopable, and there are no development rights that could originate from it.
And I do know that they've, there are people that are already buried on that property. I know that they've already had, had funerals out there, so it's not like vacant property just sitting there.
The only thing, and I don't know the answer to just the point, is probably sometime, you know, there's always a possibility that even though there may be some grave sites, you know, maybe it's only a couple acres of the 10, and I'm not saying that they would ever try to try it, to change it, but, you know, you never say never, not... If that's, if you're basing your decision on the 3.1 acres based on the 10...
Candidly, I mean, that may be an issue that, given the direction of the council, that the city manager will give us, you know, the opportunity to explore a little further. There may be some ability to, you know, provide some more space in that property.
You know, yeah, one option, just throwing this out, may be that even if you consider the 3.1 something acres, but it actually extends out to five acres if there were ever an opportunity to, you know, the rest of the property wasn't used for the, as it is now. Yep. But you, you've got your direction.
I've got the direction that I need. Last staff update, and this is just an update, and it was one of those mornings that I hoped I didn't have, but I learned this morning that our police chief is, is moving to the private sector. Deb accepted a executive job with AT&amp;T in their investigations department, so she will be moving on December the 4th. So, she's done a lot of great things for the city of Milton, one of our original deployment team members. She hit her 20th anniversary in law enforcement this, this year, and has decided to try to focus around a little bit more of a normal work week, as her daughter is now 10, and she's going to make that move on December the 4th. So, I'll name an interim police chief before the end of the week, and we will start a recruitment process that will identify her successor. So, I just want to let you know of that and bring you up to speed. So, when you see her, thank her for eight years and four days of really hard work for the city of, city of Milton. So, with that, I don't have any other staff updates tonight, unless you have questions for me.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much to everybody here tonight.